The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, July 8th, 2020.
Welcome to the White Pine County Commission Meeting for this Wednesday, July 8th. Would y'all please stand up and pledge? Ian wants to be expected.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the Republic of America, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as usual, we'll take your first moment for silent prayer, meditation, whatever Okay, we'll get open to public comment in person, and I'm having a hard time with this mask. I don't know if you can hear me or not, so I'm gonna try to just lay it down here on my, best I can do. I just look very hard to breathe, talk. Okay, I see you all wearing masks, that's, that's, that's nice. And we're starting with the first item on the list, which is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone today? Are there any audience on the phone?
Mr. Chairman, yes, this is Gary Paredes.
Yeah, Gary, go ahead.
Um, there's, I know there's been a lot of controversy about the masks tonight, you know, watching, you know, what's happened over the weekend. And I just thought I'd call in and, you know, voice my support of the medical health officer and what he had to do over the weekend. Um, as a business owner, I am, you know, watching and hearing rumors that the state's gonna have to close down the casinos again because of the lack of people wearing masks. And to me, it's all about the economics and the economy. I think everybody should, you know, should wear masks and help out the economy. If we have to close it, close down again, it's gonna hurt everybody, local governments, the state, and everybody, so I just wanna, just wanted to give my support to the Health Director for what he's doing and what he's done. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Gary. Anyone else on the telephone with public comment? You see anybody, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, in the audience, anyone with public comment? Please come forward, say your name.
My name is Nathan Robertson for the record. I would just like to send my gratitude to the county for their help this weekend. Dr. Byan's decision and recommendation certainly took a lot of courage to make. And just to be clear, in case anybody in the audience is a little vague on this, no directives or orders or mandates were sent out regarding this. Recommendation from Dr. Byan was sent out to the county, to the city. Organizations were asked, presented the information and asked for their cooperation, and they willingly did that. And I don't think that's a small thing to note, that on the Fourth of July, our community came together for a life-long pursuit of happiness and making ourselves as safe as possible. Courage is making hard decisions in the face of overwhelming facts. And we appreciate Dr. Byan and all the work he's doing in our community. Just so that the commission is aware, on the way in, I got asked a couple times this morning about letters the city had sent out regarding mask-wearing. As I said before, the city is not going out and actively patrolling on this, either is the sheriff's office, but we are responding to complaints we receive by sending out a letter. No one's business license has been threatened. The letters merely state that the city's been made aware that they're not complying and that they could face some, um, public nuisance fines, I believe is what it is, could, and they have a few days to comply and then provide it with the information. We are in the inform and educate mode, and we'd like to stay in that mode, so we do appreciate all that and appreciate the courage of our community leaders. Thank you for your support this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience with public comment? Please come forward to your name. Anyone?
Hi, Elizabeth Francis, my next director, White Pine County, for the record, and I am here on behalf of the department heads. We had our quarterly meeting yesterday, and there was a, probably about an hour-long discussion on the current situation related to COVID-19. And they requested that I come forward and just express some of their concerns to the Board of County Commissioners and make them aware. One of them was, now that we appear to have this according to Dr. Byan's report, here in our community and potential community spread, how do we deal with employees that may have been exposed? And what does that exposure look like? In answer to these questions, none of us felt educated enough to go ahead and, and get, provide clear answers, so we reached out to Dr. Byan. And his response was that he shares the concerns the department has, but he believes that there's a reasonable plan to minimize risks. There are only three active cases in the urban community, and the rest have been recovered. The whole point of contact tracing, because we did have a discussion on contact tracing, is once we are able to locate the exposed and isolate, we are able to be more comfortable conducting everyday business because of expanded testing capacity. If there are staff numbers that meet the criteria of qualified exposure, they can get tested promptly and get answers so that staffing decisions can be made. The, the department heads were very concerned that if we take everybody out, either through actual COVID-19 or exposure to COVID-19, we wouldn't be being able to provide those essential services to our citizens. So, what, what the final, uh, the hospital has come up with a new testing capacity that will give results, faster results, within 45 minutes. So, looking forward to that capability there at the hospital. So, if we can get those results faster on potential exposures and keep our, our staff safe, we will probably have less business interruption. The other thing in his memo that he released last week was, if you have had contact with an unmasked COVID-19 infected person, symptomatic or not, for more than 10 minutes within six feet of distance, you meet the criteria for qualified exposure. If that is the case, quarantine yourself, get tested after five to seven days after the last exposure. Testing earlier can result in false negative as the virus has not replicated sufficiently for detection. And so, I think that's a big solid basis for the department heads until we receive other direction from the county commission to make decisions on whether or not someone should be allowed to be quarantined. And if you can indulge me for one minute for the other discussion centered around face masks, should we have our staff be wearing face masks? And the, the consensus or the, the thought of the department heads was, there should not be a one-size-fits-all department. Not all departments service the public. You have someone out on the golf course, mowing the lawn, or you have some, an equipment operator out on a, one of our county roads, and there's no, there's no need potentially to have a face mask. But if you're in the office that serves the public and facing the public, you probably should have that face mask on. So, those are kind of where the department heads are at in borrowing further direction from the county commission. That's where they believe they should be. So, look forward to any feedback on future agendas. It's not on the agenda today, but we did want to let you know about that discussion, and thank you. Thank you.
Any other public comment, either on the phone or in the building? Anyone on the phone this night? Okay, so anybody in the building? George, please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2A, 2A, you're to consider a possible legal defense plan to reimburse local businesses that get fined from state agencies and/or state regulatory bodies as it relates to grossly unconstitutional anti-business statewide COVID mandates with funding from the Paris relief fund. I haven't read anything so ridiculous in all my life. Someone knowingly violates law or regulation that has not been declared unconstitutional by any court, and yet some politician wants to bail them out with taxpayer's money. Now, what? COVID-19 is very real, and if it is not slowed down, we all may face another shutdown of 30 to 60 days. That will obliterate a lot of small businesses, let alone some of the bigger ones. It will cut your tax revenues. Where do you propose to make up the difference? In rates taxes? Not gonna happen. Those that are in law enforcement or enforcement should bear the burden of cutbacks and layoffs first. You have yet to reimburse me for the damages I suffered for my property on High Street. Your building inspector refuses to give me a building permit for which I'm willing to pay for, yet the community acquired building and yet to pay any fees at all. Why the discrimination? I'm getting tired of this. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2C, one, you're to consider the ratification grant award for St. Permon, excuse me, Brumson for the Jack Gate Park. I want to remind you that the park is across from the working railroad that is not gonna stop. The park is located next to a lot that has a deserted boat with numerous broken windows and is an attractive nuisance to younger children. The lot has not been stopped to prevent a possible accident. It's been reported numerous times to the city and the planning commission. Your building inspector continues to selectively enforce the law, rules and regulations. Did he ever make it back from Eureka? Is he still hung up? Mr. Chairman, over the Fourth of July, my family and I went to McGill to, to see Rudy Herrenden, who is restoring the Rebecca's Hall in McGill Theatre. Doing a great project, he was talking about some of the hardships he was having, and one of them is that he has to come up with handicap parking when there is no lots available. The one lot that he did find, the person wants $45,000. There is no regulation that mandates off-street parking. We've got 10 businesses that are closed downtown. If we have that regulation in place, they will never open up. I would have to close down. You gotta do something with that building inspector. Slow boat to China. You gotta address it, Mr. Chairman. Get these knees off our neck. Mr. Chairman, how many discrepancies, deficiencies, go ahead, bring it before you, before you use something with the inspector, building inspector, who select, who selectively enforce the law under color of law? I told you numerous times that the biggest detriment to growth of our city and county is the building inspector. Depending on who you are, nothing gets done, or there is no problem. The discrimination needs to stop. You need to head that effort to stop it.
Okay, George, your three minutes are up. Thank you for your comment.
Can I get some answers?
Yes.
I'm waiting.
Anyone else in the audience with public comment? Please come forward, say your name.
All right, uh, my name is Dr. Brian Hamilton, from Baker, Nevada, and I want to talk a little bit more about racial equality and race relations. Trying to come to you from a place of humility and not from a place of enlightenment, not to just open, open your hearts to what I have to say. A couple main points that I, I want to emphasize is, first, race doesn't exist as a biological or genetic concept. This was a creation made to, to make racism work, and there's more diversity in Africa than there is in the rest of the world at the time. And that means that we may be closer related to somebody from Africa than other Africans are to each other. But it does have real social and cultural consequences, as we're seeing folks die, and black people and Latinos dying at these higher rates for COVID-19. And also, racism's about power. It's not about being nice to people. It's not, uh, we think of it as this individual conscious and intentional action, but it's actually a system that exists, and exists to distribute power. You can think about the letter I wrote about the statues at the last meeting. One group says these objects are hurtful to us as a people, and another group says, we don't care, we're gonna leave them up because history. So, you can think about, if you start thinking about it in terms of power, it sort of changes the way we look at racism. And one thing I want to talk about is how, one way that some of that power exists, and I want to talk a little bit about white privilege. And white people don't like to be called white. It feels like Nicky Pope from Seven Nighters, work or something. And part of that privilege is that white people, we're not used to being identified by a race, and it kind of hurts to be put into this category. The privilege doesn't mean that we didn't struggle or we didn't work hard, it just means that we didn't have to struggle and we didn't have some of these difficulties because of the race. I mean, I would like you guys to ask yourself, if I was a person of color, would I have been elected to this position? And hopefully, that makes you a little uncomfortable, because racism isn't a comfortable topic, and it's really important that we sit in that discomfort and we think about it a little And it, it also kind of comes to putting yourself in other people's position. You would think about coming off of Fourth of July, Independence Day, it's this great American holiday, but you can also see how some people might not feel that much love for Fourth of July or even for a country that put them in a position of slavery and has denied them any of their basic rights. And I want to kind of point out that white privilege isn't harmless, it has had real effects, and we're able to not see it. But you all are responsible for this big institution, you employ a lot of people, you can be a very powerful voice for change.
Okay, your three minutes are up, and I appreciate your comment. We have a strict, uh, we stay strict, we do the three minutes as much as we can. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments, either on the phone or in public? Nothing on the phone, Mike? And nothing in the public? Anybody else? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move forward. Out of public comment, we'll now recess, the temporary recess, the county commission meeting, and open the 9:00 AM fire commission meeting. And the first item on the 9:00 AM fire commission meeting is public comment. Is there any public comment on, on the fire commission? Anyone on the phone? Anyone in public on fire commission? George, come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'm asked to pass the mask, and again, as the fire chief had a chance to inspect the ingress egress on Avenue D accessing Highway 93 near the new Holiday Inn, the road is much too narrow to allow an emergency vehicle access, let alone a large fire truck or ladder truck. The Holiday Inn is a three-story structure. The city has failed miserably to address that issue. There's no proper ADA access alongside the camp junkyard. The curb should have been installed back another six feet to allow a wider road. The county and the city need to hire engineers and inspectors that know what they're doing and abide by codes that they have adopted. We have rules, we have regulations, and yet we continue to screw up. We don't, the taxpayer, but unfortunately, leadership needs to step up and do what they're need, what they need to do. I've not seen any action. That stop sign on the corner of Avenue D has been knocked over again, the boulder's been pushed on with the sidewalk, you're impeding ADA access. Where does it all end? Get rid of those people, you'll have more than enough money to correct the deficiencies. Other than that, the burden lies on your shoulders, all of you. You can't ignore this, and you need to do something. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I'll make one last call for public comment in the fire commission meeting. Hearing none, seeing none, move forward. Item one is discussion update on fire district progress. Red North Fire Chief and Rofford Era, Eady Fire Chief, please go forward.
Hard to hear to talk to, uh, so, you got my reports, did I get them in on time? Any questions on that? Uh, just probably want to touch base on the Lund fire incident. Got lucky down there with the wind, pushed it around the town a lot, but we had real good cooperation with federal, state, county, city, and private systems. I mean, it was just pretty amazing to see how everybody comes together, so I'm wanting to be down down there. So, work out good, didn't lose any structures, no cars, no, most important, no people. So, all in all, I think the efforts by everybody was successful, and we appreciate it. You got anything, that and that around?
No, I think the acreage on that burn was...
It was, I think, 8,600 acres.
Yeah, it was big.
Yeah, in about seven hours, so it moved quick.
No, it was, uh, chaos for first half hour, hour, but everybody worked well together. We did what you needed to do, what they could do at the beginning. Sheriff's office kind of blocked traffic for us, and it was a lot of chaos, but it went, went well, that, I think everybody worked well together.
Yeah, it was a little chaotic at first, but I mean, anything like that's gonna be chaotic, so.
Yeah, the weather was so high that there was nothing to do.
You should be commended for your leadership on that and the saving of life and land and property. You guys did a good job, and it goes to show you what cooperation between different agencies can do when they work together. It was very, very effective, and you guys did a great job. You relayed that onto your other constituents, like the Forest Service, BLM, but the people of Lund and the people of White Pine County appreciate what you did, and you did a good job. Thank you.
Firefighter Lund is ongoing, and hopefully with this COVID stuff, you know, we have curtailed a lot of classroom training, EMS, and fire, just so we didn't have a gathering of people, so hopefully we can work with that. The firefighter one is still ongoing, it's a small class, we do it out in the base, so they're, they're safe where they're operating, but that's still ongoing. Class do really well, they're already a lot, they're, they're enjoying it.
Now, some of the EMS training and classroom stuff, we're in, they're doing with Zoom meetings, which will also give the people in Lund the data that would have to travel for an hour-long class, the opportunity to participate, so we're working on getting that set up as well.
Um, Brent, uh, you and I've had conversations, and I do think it's appropriate at this time to maybe down, down the road, hopefully within the next month or so, is have that discussion with the, with NDF, BLM, and, you know, the fire people, emergency people in regards to a post operations meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
So that that's, because we don't do very, very few, um, I can't even remember really that many to, since I've been here the last 20 years, uh, in regards to the, the urban wildlife interface.
Yeah, I spoke to Ray Maces about a little bit, he's in agreement, we should all sit down and...
Yeah.
And do an after-action review of stuff.
No, I'm not familiar with the terminology, the public disaster, so.
Worth, yeah.
I know best with the touch with Raymond, and I also did call Raymond, and he dealt our thing that well, and, uh, there's, yeah, there's always a few things we can improve on, and we've touched, I know myself and Amelia, touched bases on how things figure better.
But a group where people, you know, sit down and have that discussion, uh, you know, the way things are going, I think is important to have.
Just for your information, we always have a fall meeting, we always have a spring meeting with BLM, Forest Service, and a lot of times, when things are calm, we, a lot of these things come out during that. I, I agree, we need to do it more, more quickly and make it more, uh, responsible to, to, gather that information for the next incident.
Anything else you got, Brad?
No, 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 thank you for your support.
Thank you. Very nice.
Thanks.
Item two, is discussion on a possible action, approval of monthly financial reports for June 2020.
Thank you. The reports are in the packet, they are only through June 28th, as the, because of the Fourth of July weekend, we had an early cutoff. And also, these reports will be held open for two months to close out the fiscal year, because this is fiscal year-end. You will receive that final report as part of your audited financials probably in December.
Anybody got any questions on that? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous, aye, agree. Discussion for possible action and approval of Resolution 2020-47 granting the fire, District Fire Chief to the ability to ban controlled burns during certain conditions. Brett?
Once again, I spoke with Ray Maces on this, and we kind of agreed that Forest Service already has their restrictions in place this year for no campfires and stuff. BLM's restricted, but they're not totally shut down. And in light of what happened down right now, I just think right now with moist fuel content, moisture content, is at historic lows, and it's in the winds we've been having, I just think it's, we need to be able to control some of these controlled burns that's taking place. We haven't had any really for the last month, but just if somebody decides to do it, I think we need to really look at that, kind of allowing it, because the last thing we want is somebody to have one, get it out of hand, and have a disaster with it. So, I'll, up to you guys what you think, what your opinions are.
I mean, I think it's pretty common sense, just gotta be smart with this, this time of year.
And Brian, this is for you.
It's a lot, yeah, so, I mean, it's under the fire district. I think what I would do is, if this passes, and I feel like there's some appetite for this type of restriction, that I would bring an ordinance that the chief would actually enforce. I, I do think it's legal. I had actually forgotten the fact that we didn't end up passing a burn permit ordinance last year. We got hung up on a couple things. This is a little more narrow, it doesn't really talk about certain types of fuels or really, you know, going into people's backyards, it just kind of gives the, the chief the authority to impose some sort of common sense measures based on the conditions and sort of time, place, and manner, essentially, you know.
Consistent with what other agencies are doing.
Consistent with what other agencies are doing, yeah. And right now, having, having looked at the fact that we didn't pass anything, I just wanted to make sure we could get something on the books during this vital season to, to come, to type the public, so.
Anyone got any questions on this? And if not, I'll look for a motion to, uh, motion to approve, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to approve.
So, we approve.
Second by, I think Ian was first, a motion by Ian, second by Shane.
Fair enough.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous, thank you. Item, thank you. Item four, is discussion for possible action, the approval of the minutes from the fire district meeting of May 27th, the special joint board of county commissioner fire on June 10th, and the June 10th regular meeting. Anybody got any corrections, additions, or additions, please?
There was a correction on May 27th, where I'm thinking, George is comment. First, one, two, three, four, fifth line, um, advised, and then now, he said that should be removed, so I'll read that correction.
Okay. Anyone else got anything, addition or correction? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the three meetings.
Motion to approve the three separate minutes of the meetings.
Motion by Lori?
Second.
Second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, passion unanimous. Last item in the fire commission is public comment. Is there any public comment, either on the phone or in person? Hearing none and seeing none, we'll adjourn the fire commission meeting, reopen the regular county commission meeting, and we are gonna go to a 9:30 phone call that we got from Dagney, is that correct, Elizabeth?
Yes, uh, we're gonna go ahead, and David Stapleton is with Nigel.
Yes, um, oh, we're gonna go ahead, and Debbie Stapleton is with NACO. And one of the agenda items that I have on page four is a direction on utilization of terrorist act funds. And one of the things that NACO is, is assisting with is Small Business Assistance Program. And so she is here with us...